Item 75422, which is declarations of any disclosable cunary interests to receive any additional interest not already registered. Obviously, if there's nothing that springs to mind at the moment should it occur during the course of our conversations, please do feel free to indicate. Thank you. Apologies for absence, please, Karen.
Apologies for the receipt from councillors Cannon, Dowling and Hollis.
Thank you.
Sorry, Karen, did you say Dowling? Sorry, I didn't, she asked me to say, and obviously you've been telepathic.
So then we move on to confirm the minutes of the full council meeting held on 28th February, accepting those items dealt with with the following, following the exclusion of press and public, which is to be addressed under agenda item 76422, to be confirmed as a true record. So we've had these distributed previously, we'll go through them in order, page one, page two, page three and page four. Are we all happy that they were true and fair reflection? Any objections? Super. We will then go on to receive the committee minutes. First is the Venues and Communications Committee, and that's councillor Wright, please present.
May I present the minutes of the meeting, which was held on the 8th of March. It was all resolved business. So pages one, two and three. Move the minutes down now.
All agreed? Super, thank you. We then move on to the Allotments Committee. Councillor Taylor, are you happy to present in the absence of the chairperson, councillor Crawford, please?
I'd like to present the minutes of the allotment meeting held on the night of March 2023. There's one resolved item, the project's budget, the year's ending 2023 and 25. That point has been approved. I'd like to move the minutes.
All those in favour? We then go on to the Planning Committee, councillor Wright, please.
Madam Mayor, I present the minutes of our March planning committee meeting held on 14th of March. Again, they're all resolved matters, page one, two and three. Move the minutes, madam.
All agreed? Thank you. And then on to myself with the Finance Committee meeting held last Tuesday, the 21st of March. There are a couple of recommendations to the council, please. So the recommendation is that full council adopts the three-year budget plan, year ending 2025, 2026. All those in favour? Against? Abstentions? Thank you, that's carried. There were three abstentions, Karen. We then move on to 74522, which is the approval of the project's budget, and the recommendation is that full council adopts the project's budget for the years ending 2023, 24 and 2024, 25. All those in favour? Against? Abstentions? That is carried. And then we move on to 74622, which is the recommendation that full council adopts the credit control policy. All those in favour? Any objections? Any abstentions? Thank you. That motion is carried. And so move the minutes. And then we move on to the final special allotments committee, and again councillor Taylor, are you happy to present?
Yeah, I'd like to present the minutes of special allotments committee held on 21st of March 2023. There's one resolved item, that the committee will continue to run the allotments committee competition. I'd like to move the minutes, please.
Thank you. All agreed? Moved. Thank you very much. So we then move on to mayor's remarks and report. You'll have seen circulated quite a month in March, which was very welcome. I have to say, it was absolutely fantastic being invited to present the awards at the esports gaming event at the Carnegie. This represented over 100 people coming together to, it probably sounds really random, but do computer gaming in a room. We had people from across the country and across Europe coming to compete. And I was incredibly privileged to have someone tell me how fantastic Thetford was, how they really enjoyed seeing the kingfishers down by the river, and they particularly enjoyed going to the football match that day as well. Clearly, that particular parent of that young person wasn't a gaming fan, but was a football fan and chose to support us. So that was very nice. But yes, there was a lot of feedback and local businesses, particularly pizza, fast food providers did particularly well that day as well. So it's nice to have something a little bit different, bringing in a variety of people into our town. So they were very, very welcome. Yes. And then I'll just do the final reminder that there are still tickets available for the mayor's ball, should you wish to purchase those. That is at a cost neutral to the public purse. So, and we have reached the break even point in terms of ticket sales. So that will be supporting my mayoral charity of the year, the Norfolk Reading Project, who actually had a training course in Thetford today for another eight volunteers into our school. So it's becoming a real positive thing for the town. Thank you. We then move on to town council representatives on other bodies to receive and note any reports. Does anybody have anything, please, from the bodies that you are placed on by this council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not me, actually, but Brenda is our, councillor Cannon is our representative on the council steam, and she's sent her apologies. I'd just like to mention that we will be opening the steam on Easter Sunday. I understand that the mayor is going to be there amongst other high dignitaries. So if people would like to attend, they would be more than welcome. It's starting to get a real good name for steam in the area. There will be no end of extra engines and smaller engines that people can ride on and get some information about. So that is on Easter Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Councillor Taylor, please.
I'm anxious you invited the full bodies that have been appointed by the council. I've just been asked to stand on a body that hasn't been appointed by the council. I take it from your referral there that you don't want to hear about anything unless it's been officially appointed by yourself.
It's not by myself, it is by the council. I am not the council, nor am I a sit.
Okay, well, I'm just looking for guidance on that, I was going to give.
I will happily defer to the town clerk, who will guide me.
If the body you have been appointed to wishes to write to the council and ask the council for official representation of a town councillor on that body, then we would be more than happy to receive that request and put it forward to elect somebody to be on that body.
Well, they've asked me personally to stand on the body, and I've decided as a councillor, I will do that, and I'm reporting back to the council, which you don't want to hear about. So it fits into time.
But that's because the item is for ones that are, actually, people have written to the town council to ask the town council representation.
We have checked residents in the past eight years I've been a councillor, where we have been involved with things that have come up in their infancy, where councillors have got involved for the good, which have been allowed to be spoken about. But I have noticed the last few years, that certain people on the council don't like to hear about what's going on.
Your question specifically was councillor Taylor.
I thought I had good information for the people who come here tonight, however, you don't want me to tell them? Right.
Your question specifically was, was regarding the process of how to be a representative on a body. That process has been shared with you. Just because it doesn't agree with how you feel things should be done, doesn't change that process at this point in time. You are welcome to change that process via process. Councillor Brindle, please.
I'm just in the stomach.
Councillor Brindle, please.
I may be in the sense of, welcome some guidance, and that is to do with being a council representative on a governing, a school governing body in Thetford. They're a bit vague about which councillor it is, so I'm happy to take guidance, whether you want to hear about that or not.
So my understanding from that is normally it's a local authority appointment, and I have been a local authority appointment when not a councillor at all. So it's within that gift. So I think that's perhaps a conversation that we pick up offline. Are there any other representatives on outside bodies that would like to report, please?
Is that an official or to a body?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, we must get the terms right, Jim. Because I was going to say something else, but I believe it's not an official body, so I'll keep me balanced, right?
Thank you so much councillor Taylor for your forbearance. Councillor Barretto, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I should start that closing in a better note, considering they are seated on the board of the Thetford Music Project as a council representative, and they have been awarded part of the community's funds from Breckland to take on more students to learn music, even particularly for the ones that are low income, the ones who couldn't afford it, that the opportunity to develop its skills and, I mean, and after school working and activity that should teach them something positive. So I would encourage anybody that is parent or guardian, whatever, if they have children, regardless of circumstances, or whether or not they have instruments, if it shows an interest in music, please approach the music project, because there's the opportunity to work with people to get involved and benefit from the projects. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barretto. Anybody else, please? In that case, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is repertory county and district councillors. Terry, would you like to kick off?
Yeah, a couple of things that might be of interest. Firstly, Cannon's Close. I was contacted by residents of Cannon's Close about a specific lack of drop curbs in that area. We have a lack of drop curbs all over Thetford, but residents in Cannon's Close in particular requested some. So I was able to meet with residents there recently, and as part of my Norfolk County Council local member highways budget, we're all allocated, each county council's allocated £10,000 for local highways projects. Within this current financial year, up until the end of March, I've managed to agree with them to new drop curbs. For those of you that know Cannon's Close, it's just on the, as you go through the entrance on the left-hand side, which basically connects up a stretch of pathway there leading into the town centre. So that will be happening soon. More disappointingly, dare I even mention the words 30 for Thetford? The mayor may wish to comment about this as well, but for my own part, I was very disappointed with the complete lack of communication from Norfolk County Council when they changed, well, they didn't change, they removed the 40 mile an hour signs and didn't put up any replacement 30 mile an hour signs, which is perfectly legal, we know, but given we've got a longstanding speed in Thetford in most areas, I certainly wanted some better publicity about that. And we found out as county councillors, when I drove to work one morning and saw them changing the signs, which I don't think is the right level of communication that we expect from Norfolk. I am pleased that after pressure, they have put up a few 30 mile an hour signs at key points in town. They have done some publicity, press release went out. It's nowhere near, speaking for myself, what I would have liked in terms of publicity. This was a positive conscious decision to reduce the speed for safety reasons, and, you know, hopefully we can continue to get the message out. And I have requested some freestanding temporary signs to be put in a few locations, and I'm waiting to hear if they will do that. It's a little bit too little, too late, but the more we get the message out, the better. We've got it for council at Norfolk today, and there was two key motions which we voted on, and one of which I spoke on. Firstly, in relation to rivers, there was a motion to adopt a way of working in relation to supporting rivers in Norfolk, particularly chalk streams and smaller rivers better. We have a portrait record in this country of safeguarding our river networks, frankly. And there was a good debate, I felt, at county hall about that today. It's been referred to what they call the Infrastructure and Development Select Committee for further debate, but I think it's something that we all in Thetford are passionate about. And I made the point that rivers are important, yes, for the environment, for biodiversity, but actually for leisure and recreation and for the local economy too. And then lastly, we had a unanimous vote, it doesn't happen too often at county hall, but we had a unanimous vote in relation to more support for WASP women, women who have been affected by the state pension changes, and the motion called on the county council to more, to advocate and support the 55,000 women in Norfolk who are affected by these changes. And it was pleasing that that was a unanimous vote. Lastly, just very briefly on Breckland, I continue to beat the drum about disabled facilities grants. There is a complete lack of funding from the government in relation to DFGs. These are some of the money used to install wet rooms, and other really important measures to enable people to come out of hospital, enabling people to stay in their own home rather than moving to a care home. The entire budget for this current financial year for DFGs in Breckland was used up within a few months of the financial year. So an awful lot of people have been sat waiting for DFGs that haven't come for the majority of this financial year. We're about to get into a new financial year, the money will be topped up, but it's nowhere near sufficient, and Breckland cabinet members particularly, and others, are making the point that we've got to be increasing the disabled facilities grants budget, because that helps the wider social care and NHS system, particularly around et blocking. So that's been spoken about quite a bit at Breckland level. Thank you.
Question for councillor Jeremy on his report.
Karen.
You're very welcome.
Very nice of you, Jim. Very often I agree with councillor Jeremy, but I think when they took down the 40 times, 30 mile an hour sign should have put up, because that would have been common sense and safety. However, in my dealings with Norfolk highways over the last eight years, the last thing they ever think about is safety. So I agree with you there. My question for you is, I believe that you brought out a manifesto. I haven't seen the manifesto yet, I'm intrigued, because I've been very busy. But is there any rumours, somebody's told me that you and the other Labour councillors have said on your manifesto that you're going to forego your salaries at the district and county level? Is there any truth in that? Because a lot of people are getting excited. Could you just confirm, please?
I'll happily provide councillor Taylor a copy of the manifesto. It is available online, if anyone would like to read it. And no, I would not be foregoing my allowance, that money as a district councillor, should I be re-elected and continuing as a county councillor, enables me to put in the many, many hours that I do. You're busy working, Mark, I appreciate that. You've been a Breckland councillor. It is a huge and time-consuming commitment. Frankly, if we didn't have an allowance for people, we would have very wealthy people only serving as councillors. It's really important the allowance system remains. And it's on the website, if you want to know how much.
I thought it was a room there.
I'm going to go round the table in turn, I said, oh, okay, yeah, fine, thank you.
I'm sure, yeah, that the allowance increase we got from Breckland, as you identified to carry, and I've got a receipt, if you want to see it. We're not all in it for the money, but.
Councillor Brown.
Good on you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Only to say that they never know which fund that it's coming out of. It used to be the arc initiative money, but Thetford are lucky enough that Breckland have put their end in their pocket for the marketplace, and some of the things that we want there are now going to have some funding. It's been a long going saga, would they, would they, what are we going to do? But it looks as if now we could get some electric points and some lighting in there to put it very much into a more usable space. And that's for why.
Councillor Brindle?
I'll finish this time, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Harvey?
I've just got a couple. Firstly, I'd like to express the disappointment of the fact that due to certain reasons on our control, we weren't allowed to ask as many questions as we wanted to at Breckland full council. We had several others who didn't get to ask questions. There's something, if we were ever going to get a majority, we'll change.
Thank you.
Likely a big white size, I know.
That has been recorded.
Actually, we've been in helping my cup with all sides. Secondly, on a different note, the flint wall along the Berry Road is falling apart. We have three holes. I've been in touch with the Norfolk County Council, they say it's not theirs, Breckland say it's not theirs. I'm really struggling now to find the direction of it. Would anyone have any idea?
Is it in private ownership? What about the people who own the houses?
The flagship, yeah.
So do flagship own it then? Do they have responsibility?
They don't, it seems to be.
Well, I would assume because they're boundaries to their properties, that the walls would belong to whoever the properties are.
That's, there's a big gap.
Obviously, I'm not a property solicitor, so please don't hold that against me, but I would have thought that normally the boundary rules belong to the properties they run around.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, because I'm a trustee of the municipal and United Arms Houses, I know those boundary rules on Old Berry Road and on Berry Road are our responsibility. Whether that curtilage is the same for other properties on there, I don't know. So that, that flagship might be the next point of call, I would suggest. Do you have some illumination for him, councillor Taylor?
Yes, I do.
Excellent.
Do again, let me stand. It's not very often, again, I agree with these Labour lads here, but yeah, I noticed when I was a district councillor, the lack of ability to be able to ask questions at the Breckland level. But what I would say is what the public are starting to pick up now, that it's not just at the district level, Chris, it's at every level, you know, at every level, the chance to ask questions, to get in depth answers, especially from the public, at all three levels of council. And I would suggest whoever does get in at the next election, that we open up a lot more time for the public, who are supposed to be here to say, and a lot more time for questions.
I'm not going to agree. I think at Thetford Town Council, we have been on several occasions, with the chair gone over 15 minutes to make sure that the public can get their questions in. Though I'm not totally in agreement there, Breckland and Norfolk possibly, but Thetford Town Council, I think we've been really good at communicating with public questions. Yeah, you know, so that's what you want.
Can we come back, chair, quick? For 10 seconds.
I'm feeling really indulgent today, I'm sorry, councillor.
If we've got eight questions from the public within the 15 minutes, we're just barely getting in the questions. We're not getting Tana to give full answers. I was like, mate, I have a couple of things to say about the things, but because we're under pressure of 15 minutes, when I put my hand up, I'm not allowed to get involved with the questionnaires, and it goes straight to in effect the portfolio, when you could actually have something to say. The 15 minutes is more than what it is at the two higher levels of council. But the 15 minutes is still not time enough to answer in depth or pacify the public. That is my main point to you.
Good. I would challenge you in that respect. At the start of each cabinet meeting, there is a half hour public question time, so that's twice the time here. So perhaps all of the facts should be engaged. Councillor Brindle, please.
Thank you very much. Can I just add a little bit to that? There is no objection that every member of the public has the right to ask questions by other forms, such as by email, for example. And there's no need to wait for a monthly meeting. Some things are much more urgent and I couldn't wait. So I would suggest that if there are members of the public who feel they're not having time to, to get a question in at a meeting, or it's not convenient to attend a meeting, or it's too late to wait for the next meeting, then try emailing the council.
I think we all wholeheartedly support that, and our telephone numbers are also on the website, so that is accessible as well. That's it in terms of county and district councils, apart from myself. So in terms of Breckland council, they have just announced details regarding the household support fund details for the forthcoming financial year. This again will run for 12 months and provide support to vulnerable households at their time of most need. It will run in four equal rounds, the first running from April to June this year, which is a fixed payment of £300. So please do make sure that we're all aware of that and can share that information. And as Roy rightly said, we're delighted to have heard this month that our request for support for the town council works on the marketplace has been agreed through that Market Town initiative. And the key element to this will be supporting the power supply upgrades for market traders and event providers alike. And I know people are very, very keen to see a resurgence in the quality of our market, and hopefully that will enhance that offering to market traders, who are brilliant, frankly. I love my fresh flowers once a month, so there we go. And obviously supports the town council's plans. And I have to say, that comes on the back of really successful stuff, getting lighting installed on both Spring Walk and Button Island to improve resident safety and reduce that antisocial behaviour in the town centre. As councillor Jeremy correctly said, we were at Norfolk County Council today, and it may surprise you to know that opposition councillors tag teamed on questions. And I asked the deputy leader to categorically state that Norfolk County Council will never support any restrictions on the movements of the county's residents in light of those residents' fears and concerns that have been expressed around the 20-minute neighbourhoods. I'm pleased to say that he confirmed that there will not be any restrictions, and frankly, I'm going to hold him to that. In making a difference to our residents' lives, I'm pleased to share that the big Norfolk Holiday Fund scheme returns for the two-week Easter holidays. That supports children and young people aged five to 16. The activities are open for bookings and it's free for children eligible for free school meals, young carers and children who are refugees. Should a child not be eligible for the free places, there are paid spots available for a small charge on many of the activities. In Thetford, we've got some fantastic stuff going on. We've got theatre workshops taking place, gymnastics, multi-activity holiday camp and a filmmaking camp, just to name a few. And drop curbs seem to be the order of the day, because I'm really pleased that, thanks to some residents talking to me and going, this just doesn't work, Jane, we've gotten a new drop curb installed opposite Roy's outside of Scott's Opticians on Guildhall Street, not Roy's.
That's you.
Roy's. Please, please shop there. Roy's Roxxham, that well-known local retailer. And, and yes, because just the movement from there, just, it was unfair and people were having to walk down the road in the traffic to then utilise drop curbs. So we've made a difference there, and I've got works going on to Green Lane to make that more accessible and usable. It will not be paved, because that is not appropriate for country track. There is some hogging and hardcore going in there to aid the drainage on those really boggy parts. And yes, I think underwhelmed was the theory behind 30 for Thetford sadly. We asked in October for comms to go out, we wanted to know what the campaign would be to keep residents informed. We were told there wouldn't be one. We said there needs to be one, and sadly, those concerns weren't listened to. But we do now have the smaller red signs coming up and the temporary signs coming up. So I apologise to everybody that has been incredibly frustrated by that process, but we share your frustration. Thank you. Yes, councillor Taylor?
Want to hear what you're saying there about Norfolk saying that we won't do the...
It's even on video.
We won't do it for, and the 20, are they going to confirm that tomorrow? Yeah, sorry, Thursday, the meeting as well?
Yes. I've had that confirmation from the deputy leader, Graham Plante.
That'd be good, yeah. Well, the people will get it. Just on that as well, one of the things that we've missed out of these clean air zones, I just want to know if the county are in knowledge, or maybe trying to push that on to affect the loo not doing the 15, 20 minutes. It's quite fascinating, because I went to Bristol last week to visit my daughter, my wedding anniversary, and I've just got this off Bristol without any nonsense whatsoever. They're charging me £120 to drive it into Bristol. If I pay it straight away, it's 60. Now, I did go into Birmingham last year, and I've thrown theirs in the bin as well, because I've got no contract in the manor. But this is what's happening, they're charging people, they're terrifying people for driving around. It wasn't a fact there was a Commonwealth council, I knew this was a load of rubbish. I'd be terrified too. If you do get one of these, Bob, just ignore it.
Thank you for the public service announcement. I am not aware of any intention to introduce. I'll be aware that it's a possibility, but I'm not aware of any intention. Have you heard anything like that at county hall?
No, I think it's probably specific to councillor Taylor. Which I'm going to find him for coming into my town.
Sorry, we just, we got Sheffield at the minute, we got. We just, we got Sheffield at the minute, we got Bakersley...
Thank you, councillor Taylor.
Knowledge to...
Let's focus on Norfolk and Thetford, shall we? Are there any other questions on councillor reports, please? Oh, councillor Man, sorry. You snuck in. We would love to hear from you as a district councillor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick one, really. Been working with Breckland Council, various agencies to clear up an area that was moved to the west of Lady's Estate, through the Lady's Estate, and the industrial estate. Using Serco, we've cleaned up that area, made it much more habitable for children to play, for people to walk with their dogs, fire and ice that area. We've also put out letters to residents who've been chucking rubbish out behind their gardens. I think that we've cleared up. And we've also been using an alcohol and drugs agency to try and deal with the local camps or dens or whatever they are there. So, we've cleaned the area north of the footpath that bisects the estate, and we're now going to get on with doing the areas to the south.
Super. Thank you, councillor Man, and apologies for forgetting about you. Okay, in that case, we've finished off on those reports. We'll move on to 76122, which is a request to Norfolk County Council to improve stop signage on Brandon Road. And over to councillor Barretto to present this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I put this on the agenda because, not necessarily because the residents in the Brandon Road area close to where this is happening, basically, people are stopping to catch the bus on a muddy patch. There's no signage for the bus and it's a bit dangerous and inconvenient. And apparently, the passengers are being moved to by the bus companies, that this is not an appropriate place for them to catch the bus or for them to wait because it's not safe, several reasons. Now, I had contacts from local residents asking for this to be addressed and for at least to put some signage there and it's safer, and perhaps to improve the area where the passengers wait, because the buses are indeed stopping there. It's a regular stop. There's at least two numbers of buses that are with regular stops picking up people there. So, they use it regularly. It's not like if they want to create a new bus stop, they just want to improve the conditions and the safety of it. The reason why we went into the agenda is because usually, or used to be, that residents could just contact the county council, raise those issues and ask for a new, for the bus signs or for the stop signs to be improved directly. Could do it through their website or by emailing the county council, the highways, and doing it. I just found out by trying to help the local residents that this is no longer the case. We need to go through the parish council, put the request to the parish council, get the parish council to put the request to the county council for this to be addressed. According to their website and from what I gathered, this is because of funding priorities. They're limited to the funds they have to improve those bus stops or to improve the signage. So, they want to sort of triage the requests from the public, putting this through the parish council, see that the parish council is in support of that, of their request, that it's actually a matter of need or higher need than other requests. That's more understanding from it. So that they focus their funds and focus on the work on the areas of most need. So, the request to this council is literally to get this request put through to the county council, not so much about the bus sign, because this is not really in our remit. It really is about to get those requests to go through the county council for them to actually get on with it and actually put those signs in place. I even asked whether this could be potentially a regular agenda item, because if this request came through and this is going to be the new process, it's bound to be more requests like those are bound to arise in the future, and more people will have come in to us as the town council for us to communicate with the county council and put those requests forward on their behalf. So, this, this might be a regular process from now onwards, to be able to get those things through to the county council. So, it's just to get the requests through, and then hopefully they will actually deal with it on behalf of the residents. Thank you.
So, to echo councillor Brindle's statement earlier, there is representation on Norfolk County Council, and every four years, this town elects those people. And I'm really pleased that that person is sitting in the room for that area, and I'd like to hand over to councillor Jeremy to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Colin, for raising this. I think it's an important issue. Something I've learned in the time that I've been a county councillor is nothing's ever simple. One would think getting a new bus stop agreed in a location which is clearly already being used as a bus stop should be really simple. But unfortunately, there has to be agreement from county council and agreement from the bus companies, because obviously, if it's formalised and they are then required to stop there, it has to be in a location that they're happy with and already part of their route or added to the route. I had managed to speak to Norfolk about this the last couple of days. If you remember, Norfolk's recently been awarded a significant sum of money by the government as part of something they call a Bus Service Improvement Plan. And the idea being to get more people onto the bus, particularly post-COVID, so many people stopped using the bus, investment in bus services. And I've been lobbying to say that we have some of that money spent in Thetford. We've historically been very poorly served when it comes to subsidies for buses. We are poorly served in a number of bus shelters, the bus interchange, and the lack of suitable displays and information on buses is a real issue. I am pleased that Norfolk have agreed and coach services have agreed that the bus stop in the location that you've asked for and the residents have asked for, they are happy with, and they are happy to include it in the Bus Service Improvement Plan, so they will pay for it. I think the cost is minimal because frankly, it's a post with a sign that says bus stop. I think it's probably more of somebody in an office processing the paperwork to say this is now a bus stop, but they are happy to pay for it. And I think what would be really useful for us as a town council, if we were to agree to write to Norfolk to support the formalisation of that location as a bus stop. I have separately, in the last couple of years, been lobbied by people that live on the Main Street Estate, because historically, when it was full of American personnel, there wasn't such a need for buses to go into the town centre. They tended to go to the base for shopping and services. As it's changed over the years, more and more people, and there's not a bus stop in that whole area. So, I'm hopeful that that will serve a number of different purposes if we get that formalised. When we write to them, and I hope we agree to do that, I think it would be good if we got some clarity from Norfolk County Council on what our role as a town council is. Their view, and I don't think this has ever been properly formalised or communicated to us, is that it's our job as a town council, if we want to pay to install bus shelters. I think in lots of locations, having a shelter would be really important to encourage people to use the bus. So, if they are under no circumstances prepared to fund that, we need to be aware of that as a town council. And I would suggest, rather than it being a full council issue on amenities, we have a street furniture budget. It might not be that we have sufficient funding, we might be to look at it. But I would think that requests for additional bus stops, additional bus shelters, come under the street furniture, even on amenities, and it's something that we can look at on a rolling basis. But I'm happy at this point, Chair, to propose that we support the formalisation of the bus stop at Brandon Road, and we seek clarity from Norfolk County Council about responsibilities.
You're exactly what I had on here, but I had roles as well. Councillor Taylor, you indicated to speak, and is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? I'd like to open up the table for debate, if that's okay, please.
Do you want to go back first, because she might answer my questions?
Just a couple of points. Thank you, just a couple of points. I'm actually happy to formalise it as a bus stop, because according to residents, the bus 83 and 86 actually stop there all the time. So, if the bus companies are stopping there, they're more than well aware of the situation. I also want to make a clear point that I don't necessarily agree with the process. I'm putting this through here to the council, to go to the county council, because this is what now the county council forces to do, basically. It forces us to bring it to the parish council before it goes to them. I think there's so much, when they are open to the public to raise their issues, and anybody could at any point in time to actually raise the issue, and they could have looked at it and see whether or not there was merit in it and get on with it. Now, it just needs a bit more bureaucratic process for us to actually go through. It's taking time away from us as a council, and it's frustrating the residents, which is one more layer, one more level they have to go through to get those small issues addressed. I don't necessarily agree with the process, but nonetheless, that's one we now be required to do so. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor?
On that, yeah, this just comes down to, again, where we always have to bow down to the higher level, even when it's a safety factor, which I totally agree is terrible. What I was going to say is, if this does drag on and you can't get the money, there's a gang of political residents in town called the Thetford Whitten, put a bid into them, and they may just make it happen quicker than what the council can.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this particular one? We do have a proposal put forward. Councillor Hodgson, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just wonder whether we ought to add in the very poor state of the muddy puddle that people have to wait in to catch the bus. One side of the road's got a path, and the other side has got no surface on it. And so, maybe we could put in a supplementary and ask the county council to look at whether they feel the surface is safe for that area. Also, I think a bit of research, and although, I mean, it's really good news that they're willing to formally recognise it, I think they have actually formally recognised it in the past, because I think, if you look on the Norfolk County Council website, it lists so many thousands of bus stops with signs, and it also mentions, and I was quite surprised, a number, quite a large number, of bus stops that are not signed. And I was very surprised that they've got bus stops up inside. And also, if you look on all the survey mapping and online mapping and street maps, mapping, it shows it as bus stops on those signs. It also has a national bus stop number, which is about sort of eight digits long, and you look at that, it tells you exactly where it is on the national website. So, I think it probably already is a bus stop, just had a little hint there, but good news.
The Division Member will be so pleased to campaign for improved bus stop services. So, the proposal on the table is to write to Norfolk County Council in support of formalising the adoption as a bus stop, which sounds like a re-adoption or just a reaffirmation of a bus stop, and request clarity on the roles and responsibilities of the parish council in relation to those requests. Is that the correct?
Amendment, it's about the bus stop and the improvement to the muddy patch, basically. That's one of the main concerns from the residents, not only that the sign is missing, but actually the condition of the stop itself, that ought to include, please.
So, then if we word the...
Formalisation and upgrade.
Yes. Thank you very much. Are you happy to propose that, councillor James? Do I have a second, though? Thanks. Thank you, councillor Taylor. All those in favour? That's unanimous. I haven't used it for a while, sparkling. Excellent. It's nice when we come together and do things for the benefit of the residents. Talking of which, we'll head straight on to the next agenda item, which is community engagement. Team, what do you want to tell Thetford?
About the bus stops.
I think we have to be a little bit careful about what we write at the moment, currently.
Yeah. Obviously, yes. However, this council has agreed that we write to Norfolk County Council to formalise adoption and upgrading of the bus stop. So, that would be the appropriate thing to state, because it is a council decision, and there is no one person identified in that, regardless of whether they are standing for election or not. So, that meets, in my understanding, the requirements of Pirda. And I think perhaps possibly an education piece, once we have a response from Norfolk County Council, so that we can educate both ourselves and our residents about those roles and responsibilities, depending on how that comes out. How does that sound?
It sounds great. I think letting people know after we got a response about what the procedure is, if they want to raise any more concerns, like the bus stops and similar situations in the community, what's the procedure now that has changed? Because whereas before, they could go directly to the county council, they come through us first. So, they need to know, people need to be aware of what steps they need to take to be able to achieve that goal.
So, is this council in agreement, then, that we put out something, once we understand our roles and responsibilities, sharing with residents those roles and responsibilities, and how we can support them?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is there anything else that you have a burning desire to share with the residents of Thetford, please? In that case, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is committee officers' update to receive any updates from the committee officers since the issue of the agenda. What do you think?
No, we haven't received anything additional.
Super. So, this is where we say goodbye, I'm afraid. So, we go on to the next agenda item, which is the exclusion of press and public. And that is to consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies and Mission to Meetings Act 1960, the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Are we all in favour of resolving that? Any objections? Thank you very much for attending.